Okay, at this time I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mr. Geesey.
President.
Mr. Kudelski.
President.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
And President, and Pam is late.
Okay, for those who are in the way, we'll send.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Mr. Schmidt, for the virtue card reading.
Okay, flexibility. Flexibility is being open to change. You consider others' ideas and feelings and don't insist on your own way. Flexibility gives you creative new ways to get things done. You get rid of bad habits and learn new ones. Flexibility helps you to keep changing for the better. If you're practicing flexibility, when you learn from your mistakes, are willing to change bad habits, try imaginative new ways to do things, are open to the ideas and feelings of others, can adjust when something unexpected happens, go with the flow, trust the unexpected. Affirmation, I am flexible, I keep changing for the better, I use my creativity, I welcome surprises. That's the flexibility.
Thank you. Board of Education guidelines, with an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. Okay, public comments. We're gonna move on to showcasing schools and student learning. And Mr. Schrein.
Tashanna for showcase.
So, I'm wrong, correct? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I went back a decade.
It's easy to understand.
All right, I know. With that, you know, Eleanor, we're gonna put you right on, right on top of the schedule here. Are you ready?
I am, I'm thirty-seven.
All right, I like that, all right. Flexibility, right?
Yes, she's practicing.
Surprises.
Um, so, this is the week before Christmas break, so we, or holiday break, so we always do a spirit week, so everyone's been dressing up this week. And then we're doing activities on Friday afternoon for two hours at the high school. So there's options like video games in Miss Jackson's room, there's board games in the commons, there's also like card decorating for the commons, and I think we're gonna give them to either like Nikusa Court or some other, some other people in our area. And then, after that, it's, the semester's done, so we'll be coming up with ideas for finals week.
I've heard it's been a fun week so far.
It's been pretty good.
The door decorating was amazing.
I, yeah, some of them I was pretty surprised about, so it's good.
I did my voting last night.
The winner gets hot cocoa, so it's pretty high stakes.
Were there some activities this weekend?
Um, no, there wasn't any this weekend.
Okay. Um, there was some question that I wanted to ask Eleanor, and I done forgot. It'll come back, it'll come back. Thanks for being here tonight.
But I, can I say thank you? I don't know what, what part you played in the day we didn't have school going out and getting, purchasing the Toys for Tots. You wanna tell us a little bit about that? That was really a cool act.
I woke up pretty late that day, actually. But I got a message and Amanda Sheafbauer put in a group chat that Jill Dunn had thought about doing this Toys for Tots thing, so there were a group of seniors that went out and did it, so we all just met up at Walmart. I actually got to Walmart late after everyone else, and they had like a single file line going towards the checkout, and then like they saw us and they're like, oh, we're going back, so we just turned around in a single file line to the toy section. So it was pretty crazy, but it was fun.
It was kinda neat, and you know, it's a credit to you guys for taking a bad thing and turning it into a good thing, so we really.
Stuck in half.
Yep.
Thank you much.
Yep. I like to see that self-initiated, self-initiated work, so thank you to that whole group. Mr. Grill.
I'm gonna pass until we get down to the emergency action drills.
Very good.
So I'll update there.
Very good. What is it?
I handed out the annual audit report for your reading pleasure, and then we'll go over it in January, and then I have just a little announcement. I've, I've spoken to a couple of you already, but the, my peers have nominated me for the State of Wisconsin School Business Manager of the Year, so I don't know if I'll win, probably not, but just being nominated by my peers is a huge, huge honor for me, so they'll put Nikusa right on the mat.
Fantastic. I say that as a good note.
Yeah, it was, it was very shocking.
Well, good surprise.
Yeah.
Um, we're onto other board work, and the first item is approving the 2021, 2020, 2021 school calendar. Terry, if you'd like to.
Yes, so we, like other years, we have put, looked at district calendars from around the area, Wisconsin Rapids, Assumption, Port Edwards, and so we start there. We put together a preliminary calendar, we look at it as an admin team, and we send it out to the staff. You've certainly had your chances to look at it, and so we are offering up to you. We've collected some feedback, made minor changes, but the calendar's final is for next year, so we're looking for your approval. Nothing earth-shattering different, but.
It's, it's good to know that that collaboration takes place with our own teachers as well as the others, everybody gets some input into that, so I value that. With that, there is a motion on the floor to approve the calendar for the 2020, 21 school calendar.
I'll push that motion.
We have first, we have second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Brian, I didn't have the emergency action drills on the question.
Yep, and I'm just looking back. Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to go back to Mr. Grill, and we'd like to discuss the annual review of the emergency action drill.
Okay. So, this is gonna be two parts, because the drills themselves, so with the new law under the Department of Justice that they put in place for schools was that we have to conduct two unannounced emergency drills every year, and they just say emergency drills. They don't say what the scenarios are and things like that, and that's why in the drill reflection, this, this year we decided the first round to look at what's a common one we do on a regular basis. So that's why we did a medical emergency, because in all likelihood, that's the one with schools, someone may have a seizure, someone may get hurt during gym class where they have to be in classrooms. So with some of our new staff, we just wanted to make sure people knew the difference between a medical emergency and an actual intruder coming into the building. So all the reports came back very positive, the drills went very well. We did have some new staff that weren't aware of the difference, so they did put barricades in the doors, but the principals followed up with each of those teachers and had a discussion and sent a follow-up email to the staff. So those drills went very well. The one thing Josh will be in in just a moment, we're looking at to do in the spring, we said, you know, when there is a suspicious person in the building or things like that, students know what to do when they're in the classroom, but what happens if we are in the lunch area, the commons area, so we're looking at a future drill, drilling some of those areas to see if we know what to do as those go on. But to update the work that Josh and I are doing with the emergency action plan, so there are a few things. After the events that happened two Fridays ago now, we revisited the plan, Josh and I, there was a follow-up meeting, but then Josh and I had some individual follow-up discussion. Our emergency procedures, we noticed that there's something, there's procedures in there if there's a threat involving weapons, but you know, if there's a bomb threat or different kinds of threats, we don't necessarily have procedures in there as of yet. So we said, Josh is looking at some different plans right now to say, here's what other schools are doing, is it just a generic threat? Here's how we handle any kind of threat? Is it categorizing each? But Josh and I are working together to say, how can we put procedures in place when we need safety? So, and not, like I said, specific to one area. The other thing we're looking to do too with our staff binders, and this was on before last Friday, I'm gonna pass around, Wisconsin Rapids and other school districts kinda have this flow chart instead of a binder, and it has just the teacher part, because our binder right now, it has the admin response and the staff response all on the same sheet. We wanna make it easier for teachers to say, oh, there's a fire, go here, flip up, here's what I do as a classroom teacher. So this is borrowed, so I'm just gonna pass around for you guys to see, but this is one of the projects we're working on as a school safety team to just update and make our teachers feel more comfortable in knowing the plan and even our guest teachers. That's a lot more user-friendly than trying to go to a binder and flip through everything. So that's one of the projects we're working on. And then too, we had our annual meeting with the emergency action leaders of the Nikusa community. We invited the police chief, the fire chief, paramedics of the area to, if there's any updates, they notice needing some tweaking in our plan. Chief Woods actually came, and one of the ones we discussed a little bit about were the non-school events. So we wanted to bring that up, and how do we communicate when people come to basketball games, concerts like tonight and things like that? How do we handle if the emergency situation were to show up there? So that's one we're revisiting. You'll also notice in the drill, one of the things we're working on with Eric Saylor in our technology department, when running the drills, we know some of the overhead speakers are still not functioning as they should. He has a meeting in January with Heartland to come in and see how do we update all the speakers, so that way gym, outside, all those are taken care of. The hard thing, he said, the guy that comes to do it, there's only two people in the entire state, so he has to book out six months in advance, so that's why it wasn't done over the summer and things like that. He's been aware of it and working with us, it's just the person is that far booked out. So when he comes in January, we're gonna be testing all the speakers, so we make sure we have all of them taken care of and addressed. And the last thing in regards to the threat on Friday and things like that, we've been working with Sonata, actually, to put into place, there's this program called Gaggle that I talked to Sonata about coming in to talk to you a little bit as well, and it, as students are typing in Google and things like that, if they're typing threats or messages that they may be thinking about harming themselves, there'll be a notification that goes to the building principals to let them know that's happening and to which account it's attached to, so we can follow up with students and hopefully prevent some of those things from happening, both harm to others and harm to self, you know? So that's one thing, school safety-wise, we're also tackling right now, so. There's a lot of work, school safety, we meet once a quarter, so I, if you would like to come in and be part of those discussions as we work on all these things, I could send you invites with times and dates. Josh, did I miss anything? Is that what's going over all that?
No.
Okay, I think you got it all.
Okay.
I mean, there's always things for the future that we look at, getting like our dispatchs connected to our cameras, which we have, but how they could better access them, and I mean, Eric's working on that, so it's not, because right now they gotta log into like two different programs, and just where they could just jump right on through a, through a website or app where they could just jump on and get to right where they need to be. So that's one thing that's coming soon.
It would be helpful if you maybe just copied us on that invite. There may be a board member that may have a certain interest, you never know. Sometimes it's helpful just to see the work you guys are doing. And I just wanna personally thank everybody that was involved in that operation. Terry Whitmore, Nikusa Police Department, which County Sheriff, you guys just made us proud and we responded, so Josh, I know you're a big part of that team, and you know, we shouldn't have to remind everybody situations like, like this about how important you are to us, so.
Thanks. Did you hear that, brother?
Yeah, tell him that. I tell him that all the time.
Wait a minute, Brian, did you hear that?
All the credits right here.
And you know, the work that, you know, certainly that our staff and students go through in keeping up in these drills, you know, those, those, it's time-consuming, and it's, it's, there's a, there's work that's done after that, to talk to the teacher, the students that are affected, so.
And I wanna thank the teachers and the principals for their collaboration on those, because we wanna make sure we're not traumatizing students as we do those drills, so the principals and teachers really work hard to make sure to follow up after the drills and before the drills to prompt them to understand that a drill is coming, you know?
Great, very good. Thank you very much.
Do you have questions on the school safety stuff?
I think, no, I think you covered it well, the document, documentation on the individual schools and their, their, their how it went. You covered, I think, myself.
Just, in January, is it gonna be another six months in January before that's fixed?
No.
Or are they gonna actually try to fix it in January?
He's gonna see which ones it is, and then he, from what I understand, Eric said he was gonna set up a time from there for him to come fix. But the one thing, the middle school, he says, the challenge right now, that's the only building that's not on the Heartland system for speakers. He's like, that one might be a summer project, because they'll have to align those. The elementary and middle school are already on Heartland speaker system, so those, he said, are a little bit easier, because it's just maybe a few wires that are loose, things like that. So that's the only thing, he said he'll have more details after January, so.
It's pretty pricey to do the middle school, so it's not in this year's budget, it would have to be in next year's budget, yeah. Because I think we looked at that once before.
Okay.
Yeah, he did say he was gonna get a quote for what, what it'd be.
Yeah, we know it needs to be done.
It's gonna be expensive.
Yeah, but we know it needs to be done.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are you okay with that?
It just, it seems like we were dealing with this last year, so I just.
Yeah. Make sure it's getting fixed.
Right.
Yeah. The only thing I need is a motion to approve the drills, just so.
Yep, I apologize for that.
Oh, no one is. No, that's the plan, the actual.
Um, there's a motion for to approve and recognize and review of emergency action drills at Humke Elementary School, Alexander Middle School, and Nikusa. So we have a first and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. That one wasn't on there.
That was my fault.
It's better than.
Because I have the plan and the drills, that was my fault.
Okay, so who was, who made the motion?
I did. Thought it was second.
Yeah, put emergency, emergency review, action drill review.
Okay. Well, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, just with policy governance, this one, we decided to forego policy governance because of the importance of our next discussion. We've been discussing an operational referendum and capital referendum throughout the district for some time. We met last week, Thursday, with our, the group that conducted the survey, state perceptions, and the owner of the company presented about, we, about two and a half, three hours, Mr. Mahon, if you'd have been here, you'd have been screaming, yeah. In fact, I think somebody voted to take your spot last week, was it you?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was pretty much, no, it was Keith. Weren't you the one screaming during? But I don't know.
Somebody was looking for your, your spot.
I would have your back this.
I don't wanna, I'm not trying to make light of the matter, very, very good information. The survey results themselves are going to be published on our website. It's gonna be in a format that looks very much like, like this right here. And this, this document contains the data from that survey. We had over eight hundred respondents, and one thing to note, the largest group of respondents on here was residents that were six-year-old without students in our schools. I found that to be shocking, but it was also quite representative of our different municipalities within our district, the town of Nikusa, town of Rome, town of Saratoga, town of Port Edward, and the town of Armenia. So the sample of the group was, was fantastic, a response rate was, was above average, and, and leads, provides, that, that provides good information. For those who have not had the opportunity to hear about our discussions regarding referendums, we have two that are on the table at this point, an operating referendum, which provides money to the district for operational expenses, and a capital referendum, one that, which, one is which, one that is for which, is for capital improvements. The capital improvements that we're looking at right now would be funded over a ten, ten-year period, whereas the operation would be a five-year, non-recurring, and it's, you know, it's not, shouldn't be news to anybody, over eighty percent of the school districts within Wisconsin have gone to referendum. It's not an easy choice, we've been tightening our belt for some time, and we've made decisions based upon what we can afford, not necessarily what the students' needs are. And that's, you know, we were looking in, in the advanced planning that, that administration and Ms. Knight engage in, we were looking at operational losses, at revenue shortages of in excess of, well, over two million a year in the upcoming years. And we have taken from our fund balance in previous years, but the board has been forced to approve budgets that were in the rep, and that is not something that, that a healthy school district can do. It's like putting money on a credit card, you're paying interest on that, and it's, you don't have enough money to do which you do, you're in trouble. And that's where we've had to make those decisions and cutting programs, and also not bringing in certain needed services. We also need to recognize that in this time period, and this is presented within these, this survey, that there's been a great deal of work done by administration to increase revenues. We need to recognize our virtual academy, the Wise Academy, we currently have nearly a hundred and fifty students enrolled in that, correct? That was non-existent five years ago, but due to the needs, not only the needs of the student, but the needs of our district, that has grown and helped us to get to where we are today. If not for that, we most likely would have been having this conversation two years ago. Tonight, we are faced with making an historic decision for our school district. We met with our staff and community, what was that, about two weeks ago, at the library at Humke. We had about forty-five, fifty people show up, and it was a range of community members, teachers. And there were some very striking comments from that group, and one that, that sticks with my mind is, this is going, you know, I'm gonna speak to the, to really both referendums, the operational and capital, but more to the operational, that this is a point where we define what we can do for our students and for our staff. We need, we need to provide our staff the resources that they need to work with our students and provide our students with the needed, needed items that they have. And it's been hard-pressed when we're making deficit-based decisions, and, and we can do better, and this, you know, I, I just thought those words were poignant, were so poignant, that this is where the community will let us know where we, where we stand. Now, I'm very, very happy that once we reserved the community survey results, that there was overwhelming support for the operational referendum. The operational referendum is for two million dollars a year for the next five years, non-re, it's non, it's, at that point, it's non-recurring. It could be expected that we may need to go back to that, but to stick with the survey, our community supported the two million dollar operational revenue, operational referendum. What we're looking to do with those monies are maintain and improve current programs and service offerings, add staff to support our students and families who are struggling, add one teacher and upgrade equipment in the technical education shop area to better prepare students for jobs and career in our region. Some of that shop equipment was there when I went to school in nineteen eighty-four. Kind of surprising, I recommend the classroom pretty easily. And there's a big need for that, you know, our, the industrial area, industrial areas, industrial tech areas within our, within our region are crying for these people, and if we can't provide our students with, with the entry-level skills that they could use for those, those fields, we're not doing them a service. The opportunities that, that we have are just fantastic. Adding one teacher to help students in kindergarten through fifth grade who are not meeting grade, grade-level math learning targets. If, if we can't, if our students coming out of elementary school aren't at grade-level equivalencies, it's hard to catch up. And, you know, our staff down there is, are working, and they're dedicated staff. We have some of the most dedicated staff that I know in all of our schools, and they're passionate about it, and I know that, you know, they, they dearly need those resources. And one of the things that, that happens to us is, is that we're losing some of our talent. We, our ability to retain some of our high-quality teachers is affected by our ability to pay our teachers, and it's really hard to, to lose a good, hard-trained teacher for a little bit more money for them to travel five or six miles or ten more miles to go to work. We're also looking at adding one teacher in the Wise Virtual School to address the enrollment role, and, you know, that's been a very successful area, and one that indeed leverages our strengths and creates more opportunities for these students. We can do a, do a better job at that than others. It's a competitive world out there, and, you know, we as a district need to, we need to, to, to set the stage for our success in the future, and that's really what both of these referendums are doing, is, it's, this is kind of a make it or break it. If we aren't able to do this, our district is going through suffering, and, you know, I hate to say that, I hate to be that way, but it's a, it's a fact. I'd welcome any, any reflections by the programmers. We added about a two and a half hour, I wanna talk more about the capital improvements, but if you could, maybe, anything regarding operational?
I was at my grandson's kindergarten Christmas program last week, and four, four kindergarten classes came in there and presented the program, and it was a wonderful, wonderful activity for that day. There's twenty kids in each of those four classes, that's way too many kindergarteners in one class. We need another teacher for that group of people that are struggling to handle twenty kids. It's a lot, a lot of kids to take care of.
I think the district does struggle on retaining.
I think the district does struggle on retaining high-quality teachers. I think the most important part is when these children and kids get to know their teachers and then build relationships and a couple of years later, those teachers are gone for something higher. Maybe it might be paid, hopefully not, but it could be, you know, on the ladder of something like that, so.
Brian?
I think we've discussed it enough.
Yes, we, and I think we have. And, you know, what we're gonna be talking about tonight, the resolution that the board makes on both the operational and capital, this is necessary at this time for it to be on the April seventh, 2020 ballot. This will, it's gonna be a big voter turnout because of the primaries. But, you know, this is, from this point forward, once we complete the next work, from this point forward, we have a job to do. We have a job to go out there and let our community know what we need. Terry, with anything regarding operationally you'd like to mention?
Nope, I think you've...
And again, the cost of this is four dollars per one hundred thousand dollars of property value. Estimated, thank you, Lynn, I promised Lynn I would look and be cautioned. We are looking at estimates, but financial markets can change slightly. And she's done very diligent work and reminded me very much that these are estimates, so I apologize for that. The next part of this is our operational, excuse me, capital referendum. We surveyed, on the survey, we asked a number of questions that had people rate the priority of what, you know, what they felt were important. We identified the weakness that we have. We have a track right now that we can't even host a home meet on, we can't even safely practice on it. In the nine years I've been here, it's hard for me to say that I don't believe we invested a dollar on that board, on that track. At this point, it's not usable. I wouldn't even feel safe to have Brian on, and I'd probably tip over in my wheelchair going around.
It's not repairable.
It's not repairable, and I think that's important to me. We as a district come from a, we have pride as a community and it's simply something that we simply couldn't afford to keep up on these items. In addition, there's issues with regards to the dual-purpose field we have over here with football and baseball and also with our softball. It's just fallen into a state of disrepair. And there's also many additional items with regards to ADA requirements and other safety issues that we need to address. Within the survey, it asked people to identify at what levels or what priorities they would put on funding for capital expenditures. And there was very strong support for all of the items, which totaled approximately five point two four million. There were some people on the other end that didn't want to spend any money. When Mr. Foster went over the results of the survey, we looked at where is that middle point? Where does it, what does our public support in looking at that priority? And, you know, it was a range of, you know, zero, one point eight to five million dollars, five point two four. And the range and where it came in to what our public felt was appropriate was roughly two point nine million dollars. In fact, a little bit below that, a little bit above that, actually. We had to look at that number and say, okay, what does our public support? We're certainly not as a board gonna go up, put a number out there that our public doesn't support. We do not want to put ourselves in a position where we cannot win on that April ballot. We want to win on that April ballot. And with that in mind, taking that survey data, two point nine million dollars was the target. And that's what we're gonna be, gonna be making a resolution for tonight. And with that two point nine million dollars, we feel that we can support the necessary repairs to the track and other field improvements. I'm gonna be reading the ballot questions prior to us making the resolution. And the ballot questions were designed specifically to have transparency in how those funds would be used. It simply doesn't say, give us two point nine million dollars and let us have fun with it. We want our public to know what we intend to use those funds for. And we did the same with our operational. The ballot question, which I shall read at this point. Question number one, and this is the capital improvement. Shall the school district of Nacusa, Wood County, Wisconsin be authorized to issue pursuant to chapter sixty-seven general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed two point nine million dollars for the public purpose of paying the cost of renovations and improvements to district athletic facilities consisting of renovating the track, renovating athletic fields, including the football, soccer, and softball fields, and other athletic infrastructure improvements? The second question has to do with the operational. And it's, shall the school district of Nacusa Wood County be authorized to exceed the revenue limit specified by Wisconsin statutes by two million dollars per year for the 2020-21 school year through 24-25 school year for non-recurring purposes consisting of operational expenses, including improving and maintaining instructional programs, updating technology, education equipment, and maintaining and supporting other district programs? We wanted these questions to be specific so that people understood what we were asking for. And we need them to answer yes. I'm asking for that yes vote, and we're gonna be asking for that yes vote. And we have a lot of work ahead of us. We need to inform, we need to educate. Nearly every single person that we've been able to present the facts to has brought their support to us. And we have such good people in this community, I know that once we can spread the word and answer the questions that people have, that we can gain this support. I also, I'd like, you know, I'm doing all the talking here, but I want to let you know that this board around me right now are the ones that got us here as well. And I'd like to give you guys an opportunity to say a little bit before we move on. Regarding either one, the capital or operational, athletic or otherwise?
I just want to touch, since we didn't touch about the capital referendum, we haven't had an equitable track in about ten years. And athletics, it just gives another chance for our students to excel at something in life. We think about what brings those to our town in Nacusa. It's either the pumpkin fest or athletic events. And with not having a track, last year we missed out on thousands of dollars. We had to rent out Wisconsin Rapids Track for sectionals last year. And that could have been money and income for our community and schools. And with this track and possible football field to add on to it, it just brings an extra revenue and money, not only for our community stores that we have, but also give support for our students and athletes. Along with athletes as they have to keep up their grades. And with good grades, that'll go up along with their athletics. So it's kind of a teeter totter of fifty-fifty. So, you know, hands on, we do need a track to support our town. Haven't had one in ten years. But like I said, athletics is another chance for our students to excel. So I strongly would encourage those listening and those in our community to reach out and vote for the capital improvements for our track. Thank you.
Thank you, Cody. Going along with, but Cody says, you know, on the inside of the track, that's where the new football field will go. I mean, so that you're kind of getting, you gotta do the excavating for one. So it is a good opportunity to do the other at the same time, which will take the pressure off of our baseball field from having to switch the fences around and just getting it, you know, the outfield of our baseball field beat up all the time. As far as the softball goes, the one thing that would benefit them would be, or the big thing, which would go along with the track and the football field would be, you know, a better concession stand and restrooms. And then also, we would pave a way for wheelchair accessibility, you know, to all these venues. It would be, you know, up to date. So, yeah, it's something that's needed. I mean, these fields have been around for, I mean, even longer than, since I was there.
And that's a very good point, because the decision we're making tonight isn't just for the generation here today. These facilities that we're looking at are going to last generations. They're gonna be here twenty years, they'll be here long after I'm dead and gone. And I want, you know, this is something that, you know, you may have mentioned that, you know, the structure that we're using has been around for generations. I'm thinking back to my mom and dad's time, you know, back in the sixties. Now with the football field and doo-wah use, you know, that's the way it was back then. And what we're looking at doing based upon what our respondents have indicated is providing something that we can be proud of as a district. And, you know, we have great buildings, we have great staff, we need better athletic facilities, and we need to engage those students, Cody, like you said. It's a proven fact that those engaged students do a better job in school. We had, again, a very healthy discussion last week, Thursday, and I just feel like I'm missing some points. I just...
I'm just ready to make it official. Because I talked about it a lot.
I wanna, just go ahead, I just wanna emphasize that one right there. One thing that, just for folks knowing at home, that at two point nine million dollars, if we were able to pass this referendum for the capital improvement at two point nine million, it would add approximately ten dollars, I had you go there, approximately ten dollars a year per one hundred thousand dollars of home value. So for, you know, twenty-four dollars a year on my home, that's for both the operational and for the... For the capital, less than that, because my house is in there. I can support and provide this district with what they need, so that's important, that information. Go ahead, Terry.
So I was just gonna say, if anybody listening would like us to come out and answer questions or tell more information about the projects, we'd be certainly happy to do that. Please call the district office, seven one five, eight eight six, eight thousand.
One of the things that I was impressed with, with that meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, the community informational meetings, quite a few people came out and turned out. And the comments that we heard after the meeting was over were very positive. People, after they learned what the whole situation was and what we were planning to do to correct the situation, they were very positive about it. We plan on doing some, like Terry said, some meetings out in the community in the future to inform people better about the projects that we're working on. I think as people learn more of what we're trying to do and what the reasons are for what we want to do, that will get more positive comments back from them as well.
And I... I wasn't quite finished. So, well, but we had talked earlier, we had developed that list, and I don't know, Pat's gonna be talking too, or setting up some appointments with some of the churches in town. But, so we want to now really start that, you know, after the new year. And we get some information around the capital project so that we can really spell out what we're looking for and what we're trying to do. So I think we'll recirculate that, and that way we can all get out and really have some conversations within the community, with your circles of influence.
And I think one important thing to add on to that, Brian, I'll keep this short, maybe. One thing is that we've had people already approach us on fundraising. We, when we first looked at a product of this nature, we had a committee that got together and did a study that kind of initiated it. And, you know, there was interest in fundraising, but unless the school district made a commitment and put some skin in the game, that fundraising was something that was very difficult. But we do have a proud community and we do have people that have approached the district, Terry specifically. And these are some influential members of our community that are eager to get together and start raising some funds. And I think that once we as a district show them tonight what we are, what we want, or how we would like to proceed, that that can start, that will start hand-in-hand with our informational meetings. So, you know, for those who may be interested, please do ask to contact Terry if anybody would like to make onsite visits. Mr. Mahan will gladly give a tour of our district. This is historic times, guys, and at this point, I'm going to move on. Now, the first resolution that we're gonna be talking about is the capital resolution. And this is a very short statement, but it means so much. This has to do with the ten-year debt, roughly ten dollars a year per one hundred thousand dollars of household value. And it says this. Approval of initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed two point nine million. I'm looking for a motion regarding approval of initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed two point nine million. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Cody Gubelski?
Yes.
David Schmidt?
Yes.
Ersheski, yes.
Brian Mahan?
Yes.
Brian Geezy?
Yes. Motion carried. Number two. Are you ready, Pat?
Go ahead, you're draining.
Okay. Approval of resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by two million dollars per year for five years for non-recurring purposes. Approval of resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by two million dollars per year for five years for non-recurring purposes. We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Cody Gubelski?
Yes.
David Schmidt?
Yes.
Ersheski, yes.
Brian Mahan?
Brian Geezy?
Yes. The third question has to do with passing a resolution which will allow this to be placed on the official ballot for the April seventh, 2020 voting day. Approval of resolution providing for a referendum election on the question of the approval of an initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed two point nine million dollars and the resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by two million per year for five years for non-recurring purposes.
Push that motion.
We have a first and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Cody Gubelski?
Yes.
David Schmidt?
Yes.
David Schmidt, yes.
Brian Mahan?
Yes.
Brian Geezy?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna do this. And we now do this. We'll need your help. Consent agenda, Mr. Gubelski, if you wouldn't mind.
Yep. So, Nacusa Port Howard, University of Columbus donated two hundred dollars to Humke Elementary School for winter coats, no pants and boots. Thank you to them. Now backpack for kids, fifty-five dollars from Bethlehem Lutheran Church Women's Mission, one hundred dollars from David and Carol Silenberg, fifty dollars from Fifty-One Homemakers, fifty dollars from Bethlehem Lutheran Church Collections, fifty dollars from Jacqueline Urbans, and twenty-five dollars from Patty Harris and Sandy Choppick. Thank you to those donors.
Thank you very much, Cody. Any other issues with regards to the consent? Any other issues with regards to the consent agenda, gentlemen, please? At this time, I call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. We have a first and a second. All, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Future agenda items, January sixteenth, two thousand nineteen, we have a board workshop. We're going to be doubling up on policy govern. Two thousand twenty, thank you. We're going to be doubling up on policy governance and we'll also be, gentlemen, I hate to say this, but in addition to these meetings, I think we're going to anticipate at least one additional meeting a month regarding the referendum and the work surrounding that. We have a great deal of work on our hands. So we're going to be doubling up with regards to policy governance and January twenty-first, two thousand twenty, that's the regular board meeting.
There's a conflict with that. That's the first day of convention.
Oh, that's right. So we need to move that back. What do we typically do?
We can carry it to the fourth week or move the workshop and meeting dates back to.
Second week?
Second, the first Thursday of the month for board workshop and second Tuesday of the month for regular board meeting.
You have a regular board meeting. So we do January ninth for the workshop?
January ninth, two thousand twenty for the workshop. Any conflicts?
And the fourteenth.
January fourteenth for the.
Come fast after we get back.
And there's going to be in the second week of January, I would anticipate, if not a full board meeting with the workshop, we need to at least get a committee together on how we're going to be moving forward with fundraising, how we're going to be moving forward with meeting with these other, other groups. It's going to take some work, gentlemen. But again, this is, this is something that the scope, this what we're doing right now, we'll define on Saturday's school festival. I want, Eleanor, there was a, how did that, we, Terry and I were interviewed for, about the referendum questions. Did that come across or were you able to see that interview at all?
On what?
On what?
On what?
Okay. It was on the referendum. There was, you know, we had been talking about this referendum business and somebody approached us, well, a parent, you know, a parent approached, a student approached a parent and said, what is this, all this stuff? And you know what? We missed the bulk by not talking to you guys about it.
Sounds like Eleanor missed the bulk.
Hey, I'm not going to blame her. By not having a class of first grade, you'd sleep in every day. You are. You got a memory about it. But I think, you know, if you could help us with that, if you need more information to some of this.
So that everybody in high school knows, yeah?
We want our kids to know about it. These decisions may not help. I mean, some of this stuff isn't going to happen all next year, but it's going to have an impact on certainly possibly the freshmen and sophomores, hopefully. And, you know, it sounds like we have grade two if we can spread that word down.
Why don't we challenge Eleanor to put together a session where we could come up, a couple of board members and have a conversation in the auditorium? Let, let kids ask questions about what we're doing. Should be a great opportunity. Would you be willing to set that up? With student council? Work with Mr. Johnson? Awesome.
We welcome it to call. Any other comments, gentlemen, ladies? Again, historic business tonight. I'd like to go around the room. Mr. Johnson?
Hi. I'm kind of with Brian Mahan. I mean, it's exciting to be at the point after a lot of discussions to move to the next step.
I thought you were going to say move to a German.
If I had, if I had the authority.
Yeah, okay.
I do. And if we're there?
I, I thank everybody and we're on a journey here, guys. In April of next year, April of twenty twenty, that's when we need to win. And we'll see y'all next year.
Yes, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays to families as you travel. Be safe, everyone. At this time, I call for a motion.
I've already got it.
If you're in a second or in favor, please do it by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?